Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the North Bend City Council regular session for Tuesday, July twenty-six, twenty twenty-two at seven P. M. In the council chambers. Please rise and.
By blood relations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every hand.
Thank you all for coming. Okay. Number two. Is the consent calendar. We went over the consent calendar. Yesterday at the work session, is there any items on the consent calendar that anyone on the council? Wants to pull up the consent calendar and discuss. Seeing and hearing none, I'd like a motion for approval on the consent calendar.
And I move we approve the consent calendar sections A, B, C, and D as presented.
Yeah, we have most in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number three, it's time for public comment. Got a script here I need to read. Thank you for participating in public comment this evening. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak. Our governing body takes input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting laws, this isn't the time for dialogue, but rather a time to listen to you. Our city administrator and city recorder are taking notes of action if needed. We do have public comments tonight. We have, I think, four. Like to start with Samuel Adams. Are you here? Come on up. Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Hello. I want to address the crime and bum problem. I know it's plaguing a lot of cities, but it's particularly bad in North Bend. If you're welcome to join me after the meeting, I can take you down to Hamilton Street. It's just a few blocks away. There's at least three or four RVs sitting there, and I don't think anybody here has a problem with an RV. Even just camped for a few nights on a street as long as you keep your garbage and stuff and don't bother anybody, but. I mean, drive by after the meeting, please. It's pretty bad. They've got a bunch of stuff all over the sidewalk, all over the street. I mean. Usually people call that littering. It's disgusting. It's unsightly. Other people have spoken at other meetings about the smell. Some of these people are sex offenders. You know, they're not very nice people if you approach them at all. I know you guys are doing work with the whole seventy-two hour, you know, moving around, but they do that. They're okay with that. So it's, you know. And if someone lives and they're nice people and they keep their their area clean, no one would even notice them if they moved around every three days. It's the trash. It's the, you know, tying. There's two dogs right now tied to one of the trucks and they're just like hanging out outside. Another one of the RVs has a generator running. It's just sitting in the grass. Right now the grass is green. What happens when the grass turns brown and it catches fire? This isn't just a small two-foot patch of grass. This is along the woods there. I don't know. It's a problem. I see that stuff got cleared over on Sheridan. So I don't know if you can let us know what the magic password is or whatever to like get it taken care of. If it's something that, you know, people in the area have to call in to the police and say something specific or come to this meeting and say something specific for something to be done. I don't know, but I I know there's something that goes into effect on Friday, some sort of camping on the streets. Thing, so hopefully Friday. You know. It. There's a section in there about hazards and litter and stuff accumulating on the sidewalk or the street is one of those, so hopefully that's actually enforced. And not just warnings given, and I mean, it's it's come to the point where people have had enough warning. You know, we can't just give people warnings over and over. It's the same people. You know, so I don't know. Other thing quickly. I don't really know why this guy is still here. I dressed it last meeting. It was super inappropriate from the attack upon its citizen. His name out on the internet in one of these meetings. He he repeated his name multiple times and it was just really inappropriate. So if you guys could answer, has anything been done about that? Has it been addressed at all? So.
It's not bad. It's not bad for dialogue right now.
Thank you. Could you address it at some point during the meeting?
We we will be working on things. Thank you.
Okay. Chill out.
Thank you, Sam. Matt Willbanks.
Evening. Evening, council members. Yeah, my name is Matt Willbanks. I'm homeless, but I'm a longtime resident of both Coos Bay and North Bend. I'm here for a different reason than I was last week. I didn't have a chance to bring this particular issue up. Last year, I believe it was sometime in October, I submitted a public records request regarding the actions of the city administrator. Which I obviously won't go into in any depth here. Fairly quickly, I received an invoice or whatever you want to call it from the city recorder requesting a payment of, it was six hundred and eighty-one dollars and change for that public records request. I understand, you know, you have to charge for those things. I felt that the the fee was excessive. I'm engaged in basically independent journalism, and I felt that the issue was of public importance. So in the Oregon Revised Statute, it actually has a provision for a fee waiver if the the issue at hand is of public importance. Particularly for journalism. So I requested a few waiver from the city recorder. I never received a response on the fee waiver, and I emailed several times asking for, you know, a decision on whether a fee waiver would be granted. Ultimately, since I couldn't get any response out of them, I contacted Coos County District Attorney Paul Frazier. Because he has the authority if I can't get a response out of the city attorney. Unfortunately, Mr. Frazier had to recuse himself because he is named in several of these documents. Which he did the correct thing. I completely understand that. He offered to request that the Douglas County District Attorney check into the issue for me to try and provide a resolution. Which I appreciated. They contacted the city recorder and surprisingly got a response. I believe the response was. Oh, we hadn't seen the fee waiver, didn't see the email, so didn't get the email, something along those lines. I have all the emails, just not in front of me. Which I don't know if I necessarily believe that response, but at least I got something out of them after contacting the Douglas County District Attorney. So I figured I'd give them some time. And never heard another response back from the city recorder, either from the city recorder or the Douglas County District Attorney. So as far as I'm concerned, my fee waiver is still pending. The public records request is still pending. I tried contacting the Douglas County District Attorney several more times to see if they had received a response from the city recorder. And now I can't even get a response out of the Douglas County District Attorney. So I have a serious issue here. This is public records law. If you're going to deny my fee waiver, then deny my fee waiver, but I need a response to this. So I can properly move this up the chain. Thank you.
Yeah. Bob Solins.
Well, that's my first time here. I'm relocating from the fires in California. And I pretty well with the new rules, it might be solving my problem. The gentleman over there did a lot of work for the past few days. And the fire department has been super helping me get the fine street commercial cleaned up the past few days. So I'm thinking of everybody so far, and I'm just like it says, time to relocate and start over. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And we have Larry Ramstone.
Yes, I'm here because and. The gentleman there stated pretty much what I I could state beside what he said, but. I think you all know as well as everybody else in North Bend, the problem. But I have one solution that might work. And that's put up some science regarding no camping and no parking. Now, if we had them down on Hamilton, all the way down. It may deter some of them. Because right now, it's like a parking lot there. And it's like he said, there's trash everywhere. There's people living on the sidewalk as well as wherever. They use the bathroom anywhere they want to. They've stood out in the middle of the road. They've been caught by some of the ladies that live in the complex I live. Got caught, caught them out there standing, urinating in the middle of the street. And when we call the police department, they have scanners. And as soon as you guys call policemen to come to check out the situation, it turned so quiet. I mean, that's unbelievable. But as soon as you guys go around the corner, wait about ten minutes, drive back. So you're fighting a losing battle. The only way we can do this is to keep them from parking there to start off with. If they couldn't park there to start off with, we wouldn't have the problem that we have. And I've talked to everybody in the complex there where I live regarding it. And everybody in there agrees the same thing. It needs to be some kind of ordinance against them parking on that street. And we called the Fish and Game Department because they said that's fish and game thing on that side of the street. Fish and Game Department says, no, we have nothing to do with that. That's city. So. I went around a circle and back where I started from again. We need the signs up there. We get some sign. I'll even pay for the signs if you want. Because it needs to be done. The people who live in that place are afraid to go out at night. They really are. And I can don't blame them any. Got key guys packing guns on them and and totally. Out of their mind from drugs or whatever they're doing. It makes it really tough for the people that live there. And. Well, that's basically the only thing I have to say, but I just thought maybe my guys might. Work some miracle to. To get it stopped.
We hear what you're saying. I do. Thank you. Okay, that's all we have for public comment. Is that correct, Kaylee? Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate your input. It's it's very important. Next, we have a public hearing on the fiscal twenty twenty-three supplemental budget.
I'm here. President Richardson, do you have the hearing procedures in front of you?
I'm looking for it. I think I got it right. All right. I will now open the public hearing held for the purpose of receiving public input and considering whether the city of North Bend shall adopt a supplemental budget for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Do any other members of the city council wish to recuse themselves or declare a conflict of interest? Seeing and hearing none, we will move on to number three. The hearing process. Tonight's sequence of events is as follows. A, staff presentation. B, public comment. C, close the public testimony portion of the hearing. D, council discussion and questions. E, close the hearing, and F, deliberate to a decision. The council will now hear the staff report from the finance director.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Good evening, members of the city council. The request before you this evening is a budget amendment in order to make appropriations for the expenditure of four hundred thousand dollars in grant funds. As you're all aware, the city has been awarded four hundred thousand dollars from the Oregon Summer Grant Program to provide youth activities in the community. Those funds have initially been received into the general fund and the resolution included in your packet plans for a budget amendment that will transfer the money to a new fund called the Special Grants Fund. A fund is proposed so that the grant money can be easily tracked and accounted for within it. Three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars will transfer into the grants fund and twenty-five thousand dollars will be retained in the general fund because a payment to the North Bend Lanes has already been made in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for bowling activities. The remainder of the funds will be expended from the new Special Grants Fund. And at this time, staff is requesting approval of the resolution included in your packet, which amends the budget and adds this new fund.
Okay, at this time, the city council will hear public testimony. Please be advised that the public testimony is delivered three minutes per person. Is there any public testimony on the?
There is no one behind that.
Okay, hearing is saying that I will now close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Discussion and question. Now is the time for counsel to discuss this matter. Does any member of the council wish to ask any further questions of tonight's speakers, including staff, or does any counselor wish to comment on this agenda item? Please be advised that questions and comments are limited to three minutes per council.
Sounds pretty basic. We're just accounting for three, four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, and all this is going for the kids, the kids' summer programs. So this is a really wonderful thing, so. And I think, is there? Yeah, is there? I know that there's bowling. Is there any other things that are planned at this point?
Yes, I know there's a fair day. I believe it's on Saturday. Then there is also a very large event at Ferry Road Park. I know that there's a touch vehicle event that's coming up. So there's a lot of events planned between now and the end of September. And so there's also, they posted an advertisement, and then there'll be some radio broadcasting things that and social media. Alerting, we're working directly with the school districts, Boys and Girls Club, the public library, and other entities that. Really have interactions with. At need youth or youth that traditionally don't have access to such opportunities.
Ah, do you see here there's a movie in the park and the big rig bash at Community Center. Now you're here, there's several trucks that have already committed to that, so that's pretty awesome, so. Okay. Uh, anybody else?
I think it's a good problem to have. I was just going to call as we spoke before that. We're under budgeting and fiscal impact. It it reads that it's seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, and I'm, I think that might be a typo.
It's actually not. It's because we have to recognize the transfer into that's in general fund coming out of it, so we count that three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We have to appropriate it. And then we have to appropriate the money again in the new grants revenue fund, so it kind of gets double counted because it's moving from one fund to another.
Okay, thank you.
That makes sense.
Government accounting.
Yeah, loves it. Have that forever good. Okay, if there's nothing else, if everybody else is done discussing, the public hearing is now closed and the city council will deliberate to a decision. Okay. This brings us to item five on the agenda, Resolution thirty-three, twenty-three, with this fiscal year twenty-three supplemental budget. A recommended motion is that I move the city of North Bend to approve Resolution thirty-three, twenty-three, adopting a supplemental budget in the amount of forty thousand, one hundred and sixty-three. Forty million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred dollars by and adding the special crafts.
So moved.
No, we can't do that one.
Make the motion to adopt Resolution three-three, two-three as presented by staff recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Any opposed? Nope. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay. Next. Yes. Happy month. Item number six, which is ordinance twenty-six thing declaring a prohibition on psilocybin product manufacturers and psilocybin. Service center operators within the jurisdiction of the city of North Bend for it. So. First thing I guess we're going to have is a discussion on this. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, we have. Anybody that wants to. Discuss ordinance twenty-sixty. I think there'll be public comment here in a moment. So. Not sure where to go with this. Maybe a little help there.
So you're looking for any discussions?
Right.
Or ever a staff report if there's any other thing you know for that to add.
Is there, is there another staff report on this, or we've had one on there?
Awesome. So okay, you understand the process a little better. At the last council meetings. City council voted to put this before the voters. So what you have before you is an ordinance. Which you will propose to adopt, which if the voters approve, the ordinance will become an effect. So the ordinance is actually you're adopting an ordinance, which is only validated if the voters. Vote yes, that they agree to prohibit the sale and manufacture, or not necessarily sell, manufacture and.
Distribution.
Distribution prescription of psilocybin within city limits. That is then followed by a resolution, which is your actual ballot measure that will go to. The county and has a ballot measure vote. So the ordinance is is pre-adopted. If the vote comes through and the vote is yes, then the ordinance becomes city law. If the vote is no, then we just default to. Current OHA or Health Authority rules. And that process, and they're going to adopt their. Going to propose some rules, but it's not till, I think, October. So in in order to do that, it's presented to you tonight because we have to, forgive me, Kaylee probably knows the date, but prior to August fifteenth, but it may be a little less. August ninth, we have to declare and put it on the ballot. So that that's a quick summary of it. If there's any questions, I can answer pretty clear.
The bottom line is that we want the city citizens of North Bend to make this decision. We do so. Now, is anybody signed up for public comment, or do we? Okay, okay, so all right. I wasn't sure on that. So if there's somebody that wants to speak during the public comment portion, either about this ordinance, please come forward and speak.
I just had a quick question. Was it considered, because I saw that it said manufacture and servicing. Was it considered to add a prohibition on sale and personal use? If so, well, you know, I don't know. I haven't heard of why it was considered.
Only comment, only sir.
Sure, yeah.
It's only public comment. Steph can ask that question at the perfect time or the council, but.
Okay, okay. That's what I thought, so, okay. Sure, come on up.
So I'm coming before you with somebody who suffers from severe mental health issues and has dreamed of the day that psilocybin would become something that could come into our area. The microdosing, I've done great research on it. It's, there's loads of information as to how it helps with mental health. I hate having Big Pharma to be my only option. Currently, the Big Pharma drug that I take has some pretty drastic and severe consequences that if I continue to take it, it could, I don't remember what the name of it's called, but it leads to. Extreme involuntary muscle reaction, which means I could sit here and it would appear as though I had palsy. Whereas. I know psilocybin, when initially it's when you hear it, you hear mushrooms and you hear magic mushrooms, as I heard somebody comment earlier. When I hear psilocybin, I hear the potential for relief from incredible paralyzing anxiety, PTSD, things that I have come across through the various issues of my life. And I know that that's the case with many people in our, in our, our city. Putting it before people, if there's not an informational. Campaign, I feel would be detrimental to the advancing of this in our area because just saying. The OHA has declared that on a statewide level, we are going to go through on some level to provide it as an option. But if we're going to ask for the city to vote whether or not it's going to be prohibited within city limits without an informational campaign, I feel would be pretty detrimental to people like me that are looking forward to the option to have that available.
Well, thank you for that. Okay, so. That brings us to. Yeah, yeah, certainly.
Uh, thanks for letting me comment on this. I honestly had no idea this was on the calendar for today, and it's strange that it is tangentially applicable to me. I'm actually a fifty percent disabled veteran. I, my rating is for cluster headaches. Which if anybody knows anything about cluster headaches, it's one of the most painful conditions known to mankind, and they don't really have any solutions for them. Some things work, some things don't. I have never found anything that helps them whatsoever. And over the years, through research, through forums online, I had heard many, many times that psilocybin mushrooms were actually the most commonly effective thing. And of course, a lot of veterans are hesitant to take them because they are completely illegal. The other interesting thing through my research on them is that of all the scheduled drugs, they're not physically addictive whatsoever. Anything can be mentally addictive, of course. They're a natural substance. They're even less dangerous or addictive than marijuana, which isn't particularly addictive. Obviously, it's been legalized here. We have dispensaries in the city. I have actually never used psilocybin mushrooms. I've still been hesitant because of the legalities. So it's just kind of interesting that this is coming up. I've been, I've tried to pay a little bit of attention for the, to the push for legalization of them. And it's interesting that the lady behind me, you know, she said for mental health issues, mine is for pain issues. That's something that if it was legalized, I would definitely be interested in trying the microdosing. There's a difference between taking a large dose and going on a trip and taking a little microdose and taking a nap and, oh, magically, your head feels better, so. Definitely something I'd be interested in. But I think you guys are doing the right thing by putting it to a vote of the people. That's a very important issue. I would hope that they would approve it because, as I said, since it's not physically addictive, it's not really a public health issue. It's not going to cause crime. You know, nobody's going to be committing crimes to get psilocybin mushrooms, so appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So the council action is this one, or personally where I read this? I thought so. I just want to make sure. Okay. So this is the ordinance itself that I should read this next.
Yeah, the fourth one down.
On the fourth one down. Okay. I will now entertain a motion to have the, uh, first reading be by title only.
I'll make a motion that the first reading, uh, ordinance twenty-sixty be by title only.
Sorry. Yeah, we motion in a second to, uh, have the first reading of ordinance twenty-sixty to be by title only. I will call for the question now.
Discussion.
Oh, discussion too. Any more discussion on this?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, so just for clarification for some of the, the people who commented, this is an ordinance against it's pro prohibiting. The manufacturer or the use in, um, facilities, uh, for treatment. Uh, of psilocybin. So manufactured psilocybin and any treatment for psilocybin. Um, and it's. It's to be presented to the voters on November eighth for a vote. And I'm, I heard that some people are concerned. Is, is there going to be any information provided with this as to the reasons that, uh, the OHA is actually looking at it? And, and. The reasons that supported the state law being passed last year. So I'm, I'm just hopeful that. There will be some information available to the public before, because there are definitely pros and cons. To the, or arguments, let me say, let me say arguments in favor and arguments in opposition. There, there is that. And I would hope that that information would be available to the public so the public can make an informed decision after hearing it and thinking about it. So that's my comment.
Okay, um. I'm not sure if that will be in the voter's pamphlet or not. I mean, I, I don't know.
Are we prepared to, to write up something, um, as, as is. Kind of the usual approach when there's a, uh, uh, something in the, that is in the, on the ballot.
So included in your ordinance, an explanatory statement along with the wording. In the resolution after the ordinance is the wording for the ballot measure.
Right. Right, okay. Okay, we have a. First reading by that motion and a second on the first reading twenty-sixty be by title only for a second. Uh, we have any more discussion? Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both. Motion carried. Okay. I, uh.
Attorney.
Oh, there you are, Mark.
Yeah, hello, counsel. I believe it's my turn to, to read the title of ordinance two zero six zero.
You are.
Okay, ordinance number two zero six zero and ordinance declaring a prohibition on psilocybin product manufacturers and psilocybin service center operators. Within the jurisdiction of the city of North Bend, Oregon.
Okay, um. Do I have, uh, entertain a motion to have the second reading by title only?
I'll make a motion to, to second reading be by title only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, uh. To read by title only. Do we have, uh, any more discussion on this? Okay, uh, call for a question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mike? Okay, I guess it's to Mark.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance number two zero six zero and ordinance, or, and ordinance declaring a prohibition on psilocybin product. Manufacturers and psilocybin service center operators within the jurisdiction of the city of North Bend, Oregon.
Okay, uh, and we'll now entertain a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-sixty.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-sixty.
Second. Another motion in a second to adopt. Ordinance twenty-sixty. Any, uh, additional discussion? Okay, uh. Roll call here. Counselor Slater, how do you feel on the ordinance?
For the ordinance.
Uh, counselor Norda.
Um, I'm in opposition to the ordinance.
Counselor Dahl.
For the ordinance.
Counselor Garwood.
For the ordinance.
Uh, I too afford the ordinance. Okay. Move on to that. So item number seven. Is that correct next? Well. Resolution, um, referring to voters, the city of North Bend and ordinance prohibiting psilocybin product manufacturers and psilocybin. Service center operated within the city limits of North Bend, Oregon and adopting a ballot title and explanatory state.
So very simply. The ordinance again has stated that you just approved. Goes to the voters. The voters have the choice to adopt or not adopt this. The state. Approved. Law and city council had. An option to do nothing. And it automatically sale on that, I mean, not sale on that, manufacture and. Prescription use and the use is regulated by state law, which is only in prescribed facilities. There's no. Free sale on the street or anything else. This is a use that's only allowed under. Medical supervision in a, a licensed facility. So the resolution. After adopting the ordinance, if you approve the resolution or forward the resolution, you are forwarding it to the voters to make that decision whether or not. They wanna prohibit the use in North Bend or not. It's that simple, along with a explanatory statement. Um, and with any ballot measure, people can write letters, support letters and all put it in, um, the voter's pamphlet, but that's, this is simply the. The taking of the resolution, I mean, or taking of the ordinance in a. Manner to, to put it into ballot title with an explanatory statement that the resolution, if approved. Um, does.
If the county has a simpler. Ballot. On the. On the ballot in November, who takes precedent?
So if you'll hold your question, could you have to take action to get to discussion and then we'll gladly answer?
So I need a motion on the, uh. Revolution thirty-three twenty-four. Rephrasing to voters, city of North Bend, or the prohibiting psilocybin product manufacturers and psilocybin service center operators. Within the city of North Bend, Oregon and adopting ballot title for. Next explanatory state.
I'll make a motion will be adopt resolution number three-three-two-four.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
All right, now if I may, I'll answer the counselor's, uh, question.
That.
So this, um, uh, ordinance and resolution that you're, um, looking to pass is regulatory and incorporated city limits of North Bend only. The county would be in the unincorporated areas. Um, we surveyed the other jurisdictions. Um, and because of the state rulemaking, most if not all jurisdictions, both, um, cities and counties. Will have ballot initiatives. So it's going to be very confusing to the voter when they get, um, their ballot because they're in the city. Unincorporated has the county. You'll see. All of the other jurisdictions on the master ballots. So it's almost like. What just took over the ballot? And so you're going to see multiple ballot initiatives. All of them have to be, um, by home rule in the local jurisdiction. It won't be duplicative. This will only control within your incorporated city boundaries.
So every city will have a. Their thing on their ballot for their, okay.
Okay, I have a question. Um, is there the expectation that there will be, that OHA will pass a lot of changes before they finalize their rules?
Rulemaking, uh, you know, as you've probably have seen in land use and other things, in go any direction. And so it's a good question. And so it behooves the voters to really stay in tune. Uh, on this, as rulemaking comes out, we generally will cross post. Um, but once the ballot initiative is there, there's no campaigning right or wrong, only informational would be out. And so as information comes from the state or a government entity, we would be sending that out. Uh, we would not be sending out information from private entities, for instance. But your answer simply, yes, it could.
It just seems so premature to have a prohibition before we know what the rules are.
And you can thank your legislature for that a lot of things.
Absolutely. That's happened. Not the first time.
Yes.
Okay, any more discussion?
Yeah, I get one comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Um. I, I think this is the appropriate way to deal with this and offering the voters of the city the opportunity to speak on this item. Was passed on a statewide basis and as you know, the population centers dominate that with, uh, their philosophy, their direction. And, uh, I believe it ought to be reflective of, uh. Where other people live as well. So I think it's a good deal to put this on the ballot. And let the people of the city decide, okay, this makes sense for us or doesn't make sense.
And if I may, sir. The, the, the staff position. Is we can't agree more, um, because. From the staff side, if you do nothing, it's an automatic, which means the voters have no say. Um, very much like measures one oh nine, one ten. Um, so this is a home rule, which. In doing so, yes, the rulemaking is, uh, still not done, but. Ultimately, you want the voters to decide whether or not they want the facilities, the manufacturing. Prescribing all of that in their local communities. And so. If you do nothing, it's automatic. This gives the voters a choice of. Yes, we do. No, we don't. And so, um, it's the best of, of all worlds, um, to just take it to the voters.
Well, we thought that from the beginning. So, okay. Um. Just a reminder motion, huh?
Like we already have.
Yeah, we're.
So go ahead.
You're ready for vote?
Okay, uh. I guess we have a motion in a second on resolution thirty-three twenty-four. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both.
Me, Suzanne.
Motion carried. Thank you. Um. Number eight, we have, uh, action of any from resulting from executive sessions. I do not believe we have any. Action to be taken on that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, uh, next number nine is, uh, city administrator report. There.
Thank you, counsel. Um. So we issued a public notice today. Uh, the police department will be distributing this throughout the, um. General public. And to, um, uh, homeless, especially those with RVs. Uh, but, uh, uh, the ordinance that this governing body passed last month will go into effect on Friday, July twenty-ninth. And so we have taken the public notice, uh, it's going to be photocopied, um, and then widely distributed. Um, we've already had, um, uh, one resident contact us and say words out because some of the RVs were already packing and moving. Um, this, um, this process was not easy, as you know, very much like legislation and rulemaking. Uh, we got a number of, uh, house bills that had come down with really no direction. And so. Uh, we had to have an exhaustive review with staff. Involve the city planner and the police chief, public works director, our city attorney, myself. And, uh, three different law firms. And you can imagine throughout the state, there's multiple opinions on what you can and not, cannot do. There's also a lot of misunderstanding. We have until, um, this time next year. To implement an ordinance regarding camping. During the sixties and seventies, um, a lot of jurisdictions, uh, put in camping ordinances. This jurisdiction did not. So it allowed us to actually make changes and that's where we were getting a lot of conflicting information. So, uh, this council governing body, uh, uh, accepted the overhaul. Of the, uh, ordinance known as two oh five nine. And so effective Friday. Um, all trailers that are required to be licensed under the vehicle laws of Oregon must be licensed and attached to an operable motor vehicle. All abandoned vehicles are prohibited on city streets. So vehicles considered abandoned. When it does not have a lawfully affixed, unexpired registration plate or fails to display current registration or fails to have vehicle insurance. It appears to be an operative or disabled. It appears to be wrecked, partially dismantled or junked. Or it appears to be abandoned. And that gives, um, the police department, um, the option to make administrative rules and sort of alter them based on. Um, the effectiveness of the ordinance. No vehicle can park on a street in excess of seventy-two consecutive hours. And the vehicles must move more than one city block to comply with this code. All vehicles are parked on a, uh, all vehicles parked on a city street in excess of seventy-two hours. And those deemed to be abandoned may be towed after posting of a twenty-four hour notice of intent to tow. And I'll give you a hint. We tag it, you destroy the tag. We're still going to tow it. They thought that was a trick. It doesn't work. We've already, um, towed three and destroyed three. All vehicles parked in such a location as to constitute a hazard or obstruction to a motor vehicle traffic may be towed immediately. A vehicle constitutes a hazard or obstruction in cases, including but not limited to. Those where the vehicle extends with the paved portion of the travel lane. Or results in a sight obstruction to motor vehicle traffic. Or is the cause of accumulation of trash, garbage, junk, debris, or other personal property constitution, constituting a nuisance? Or where the vehicle presents a clear danger. First and foremost, um, as you know, staff is trying and actively working to, uh. Keep this issue under control the best we can with the available resources. The public, um. You know, is, is not fully aware of a lot of the restrictions. For instance, the July first catch and release law. You can give citations all day long for litter and, uh. Take them to jail and they say, well. Can't bond out. No problem. Sign here. Agree to come back. And you're out. It's that easy. Um, so that's why, um, I love when they'll actually allow home rule and allow the voters, local voters to make some decisions. Um, I will say, um, we'll compliment our, uh, streets department, our parks department. Um, you know, I could certainly post photos and show the general public what they deal with on a daily basis. Some days I don't even think we pay them enough to even deal with, um, some of the atrocious. We've had some of our employees vomit as much as seven, eight times. Um, I will give a shout out to, um, North Bend sanitation. AKA lesser sanitation. Um, because they've cooperatively worked with us over the last six months to remove two hundred. Cubic yards of trash. From this city. At encampments. Um, we've, we've done as we previously have Hamilton, uh, homeless camps. And they move, they keep moving. We've done College Park. We did the former Fort Sizzler property, forced them to fence it in. Um, there are daily truckloads to the transfer station from North Bend and the city of Coos Bay. Um, the public doesn't see that. They just see, and also when a no camping or no parking sign goes up. That simply means that those RVs and campers are going to move to another street. And so it'll just simply be different folks before you complaining because it's, it's the shell game. And unfortunately, we're in the ninth circuit. You can say positively, we're in the ninth circuit, but the ninth circuit has held that the Eighth Amendment rights prevail. And so the ordinance is the most. Authority power we can have to go over this. One thing that, um, was interesting and, and the public may seem, see it as, um, a little unsettling, uh, but it has to do with, um. Uh, how, how are the homeless obtaining so much stuff? So if you drive around some places, um, in fact, some of these RVs. They're put out by the street or they're put out in the driveway with a sign that says freight. Cause they don't wanna pay to have stuff hauled off. So they're just going and accumulating it. And then they actually trade. There's actually a, an, an interesting trade market that goes on. Um, I had one homeless person tell me he traded twenty rounds of ammunition for some. I had one homeless person tell me he traded twenty rounds of ammunition for some solar panels. So there's entire, you know, sort of barter exchange systems. There are a lot of the homeless in our community that are good respectable folks. You don't see them as nuisance. But our nuisance population has significantly increased. Since July first of last year. And we're having our ordinances quoted back to us. And so, again, we were in that phase where the state law changed. And we were all sitting there trying to figure out, well, what are we supposed to do? What are the definitions? What can we do? Can't we do? And this is a statewide issue, a statewide problem. And so we're still waiting for the model ordinances that hopefully will get in time for this time next year. But like rulemaking, we haven't seen them back some of the definitions. So. The, the staffing in the police department is the same thing. We have budgeted. You all adopted that budget with a community resource officer and a community services officer. The issue with the CRO position, which is the equivalent to Officer Bab in Coos Bay, is that when we drop an officer. So we just had one go to the US Marshal's Office. That means that we're down one officer. We have to staff our patrol officers first before we can do a community resource officer. We are in the position that we are, we do have advertised the community service officer. That is the non sworn position. That's the code enforcement person. We, we have budgeted to have a pickup truck so that they can also start hauling away some of the stuff. We're also working and talking collaboratively with North Bend sanitation on a program. We're potentially, and we're gonna have to vet all this out and it's gonna have to come before the council. But we have to figure out long-term solutions for community cleanup or some of this bulk stuff that's just getting dumped at the street. And because we don't have unlimited staff. And our budget continues to dwindle because you've been through the process. You know what it's like. Then I always like budget things where, you know, it is confusing when you look at. You know, figures that appear like there's a whole lot more money there because of the governmental accounting. When in fact, you're, you're talking, you know, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, where they actually held back ten percent. So. So the public just sees like, there's almost three quarters of a million there and there's not. Other issues and. Sort of shout outs. So we've worked with the Travel Southern Oregon Coast. We'll be getting. At the visitor center, bike repair stations. And so folks that come on the bike trail will be able to stop. They're self-serving. They will be installed at our visitor center. They're able to be relocated if the visitor center ever moves. But that has been approved and we're awaiting for that arrival. On Monday downtown, after forty-seven years of the domes at the Little Theater of the Bay, the new domes went out. Little excitement. They were all filming down there. The media was down there. They hear a big crash. Luckily it wasn't any of the domes off the crane. We, we ended up having some elevated parking. And, and so no injuries other than the tree, the tree, the tree is a goner. But staff very quickly went out and you didn't even know what happened, other than the photographs and the fact that there's a tree missing. The next phase of that project is going to be that twenty-four foot blade side. And so engineering's done and that's going to go out to bid. And as counsel, you should really give yourself a pat on the back because. The urban renewal agency money, you all say serve on that same board. Those funds that you gave them. Have matched to millions in order to do that project. And the next phase is. A children's theater, which will be another story on that building. So it's sort of the gift that keeps giving, if you will, for North Bend. Wildflower Public House had a successful soft opening. That's at nineteen eighty-nine Sherman, and that was another success of your urban renewal agency funds. It's going to be a great addition. They're still waiting for. A few amenities to that project, but there, they've already started getting Christmas. Party reservations. So we, we have a, a location downtown for that. The Deveraux Center will be opening and anticipates to open its Dream Again Thrift Emporium at twenty fifty-one. Sherman downtown. And yet again, another facade grant program. It's very nice when you look at the before and afters and you see the progress of that. But when you go in, you also see, I mean, they even put heated floors in there. So it's going to be a, a great addition, a great project. On the finance team is aggressively working around the clock, and I mean truly around the clock on clearing the back audits. And progress looks good to finish that on time. We've been very transparent that we had obtained some extensions. Because of issues that the administration inherited. And they have been very longstanding. Issues to clear. Appreciate Fire Department and Public Works. They successfully installed all of the new piping necessary. To handle the discharge from the pool. And they tested it at a thousand gallons a minute. They didn't quite need that kind of flow. But it is a really collaborative work. When you upgrade, it unfortunately. Has this trickle down effect. Like when you buy something new, doesn't match with the old stuff. So that is moving forward. That project continues. And really proud to say that. We've got a, another promotion within the North Bend Police Department. So we'll certainly come for ceremonial swearing at some point. But Officer Patrick Kenny, who's been with the North Bend Police Department for over eighteen years. Has been promoted to sergeant. He has prior service in California, so it's been over a decade before that. And so he'll be our newest sergeant. And in the budget, when we went to the budget process. We recognized that we wanted a sergeant on each of the shifts for each of the crews. And so this will have that. And then on July twenty-seventh. There'll be swearing in for Ryan Reed, our newest police officer. And he came out of the same process as a couple of previous hires. And he just happens to be a graduate of Marshville High School. And, but he does have a US Air Force experience. So we'll be happy to have him join us. And that concludes my city administrator report. I didn't go very, very slow just to kill your record, but. Right at eight o'clock. Was that? I thank you.
Had a lot of important things to say. That's, that's real big. So, okay. Do we have any committee reports? I'm not aware of any committee reports. Do a little council comments. Council and Rordup, let's start with you.
I, I really wish that we had referred the matter of the park benches over to the Parks Committee. I think. People got appointed in January and it's the end of July and there's been no meetings to my knowledge. So kind of, why do we have a Parks Committee? We don't refer them anything. And, and I think it would. Other cities have policies. I'm in favor of people being able to. Dedicate a memorial bench to somebody that they love in their family. And I, I don't know why. I, I just don't understand. So I'll leave it at that.
Anything else? Counsel Leuschleiter.
Well, I guess a couple of things on, at, a lot, a lot of good grants have come in, you know, this particular year that meet. Needs that are allowed, whether it's boilers or filters or. In this particular case, four hundred thousand dollars to promote our kids and give them opportunities to do things throughout the summer. And grant work and money is an important part of how you fund things in today's world. Our staff and people are doing an excellent job of that. LTOB is just sort of a continuing great story between city and citizens. They're doing a wonderful job with that. We went to the Opry and watched its revival and. You know, it's just an excellent place, excellent program. You get some good aggressive people that have been doing a fine job. And the next thing will be the, the big marquee and the stuff. You know, coming in that way. So I, I, I think it's a wonderful city, city success as we see it that way. And the last little thing I mentioned, another thing which is sort of disappeared over the past couple of years is back that. Coos County Fair is there and available. And they've upgraded a variety of things. They brought in some real talent. For people to hear and do and, and all the old stuff and seeing the animals and eating food you shouldn't eat. It really encouraged everybody. Go down, talk to people, see people and enjoy your time.
Counselor Goff.
Well, I'll dovetail on a little bit of what David was talking about. It's, I've seen our police department and fire department and street department, all three of them. Working at different times on this, this homeless trailer thing and. They are out there and I really feel sorry for the stuff they have to do because. We lived it for a while, for a ten and, and it, it wasn't any good. And they're, they're, they're not all that. Pleasant of people to deal with. It's not, it's not a good experience, but. I, I, I give them kudos. I, I, you know, and hopefully, hopefully this ordinance will give them a little teeth and, and. You know, what scares me is I was up in the valley last week and. Because, in my opinion, because of that real track thing, I, they moved them in Eugene. I don't know where they moved them to. But they moved them and they moved them off of the two major freeways in Portland. And. I got a hunch it was so that nobody's seen the problems that Oregon and the rest of the country are having. I mean, I ain't gonna say it's just Oregon, but anyway, that, that, that scares me when I know they moved them and, and we. Have a growing problem. And a lot of this. Stuff they call RVs wouldn't make it from Portland down here. So. Anyway, good job, you guys. I, I know it's a pain in the butt, but keep up the good work and maybe we'll win this battle. That's all I got. Oh, one more thing.
Oh, sure.
Me and Ralph had a good time with our forty-fifth class.
Still a lot of, still a lot of people there. Well. I just got a couple of things. I've been fortunate enough to be on the council long enough, along with Larry. And, and Tim also, that, that we were fortunate enough to be. At the start of the downtown revitalization of the urban renewal money and to see the difference of what it was. And what it is now and what it's continuing to be with. The Liberty Theater, with the Wildflower, with, you know. The facade improvement grants, it's night and day. The, the, you know, the. Community development when they did the hotel, that was the start of it all. They decided that they were gonna. You know, invest in that building, which had been sitting there practically empty for at least twenty years that I know of. And that started it all. And I'm, I'm really, really happy to be part of that because. You know, believe me, we got a lot of, a lot of flack from the businesses that were down there at the time because. We had the streets tore up for over a year and the sidewalks tore up for over a year. But once it was all said and done. It, it really, really has made our downtown a better place. And people want to be down there. And people want to, you know, shop and, and, and just be part of downtown and. You know, I think with, you know, this winter's festivities with our new. You know, ice skating rink down there and it's going to bring a lot of people here that are. Normally just going to Shore Acres and then going back to the hotel. I think they're actually going to spend some time downtown North Bend. I'm, I'm hoping.
Yes, I think those parking lots that Brian Owen built, the one by Chigrely's and then the one, you know, where the, by the. The Odd Fellows building. I mean, that added a lot. That's, that's within the last ten years.
Yeah, that was, that was the Parks Department again and the Street Department working together. And you know, with all those equal blocks and all that. I mean, it, it really changed things downtown. I mean, and that's all positive. Anyway, that's all I really have. Is there any other business? Okay, if there's no other business, thank you for coming. I will attend to you.